Okay, I'll be here.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Hanson's. Alex, we're starting our meeting now. Thanks. Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board meeting of Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a jam-packed agenda, but before we get into that, Mrs. Rain, would you please read our announcements in upcoming meetings?
Yes. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee; Community Preservation Committee; Capital Improvement Committee; Economic Development Committee; Energy Committee; Historical Commission; McQuan Reuse Committee; Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee; The Recreation Commission; and Zoning Boards of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hansonma.gov, or call the Select Board's office at 781-293-231. On May 27th at 12:00 p.m., uh, I'm sorry, redo. On May 27th at 12:00 p.m., the Hanson American Legion Post 226 located at 92 Robinson Street will be hosting a luncheon for all Memorial Day attendees following the cemetery ceremony. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, May 21st, 2024; Select Board, May 28th, 2024.
Okay, thank you very much. And Ms. Green and Ms. McDowell, I know we're going to discuss the Memorial Day Parade logistics. Can we plan on including that in our next announcements? Because we need to get the word out on that. Okay, so first up, we have a hearing with National Grid regarding Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA, National Grid, and Verizon New England for permission to erect the poles, wires, and fixtures described in the order here with, and I'm sure there must be an address in here, which I do not see. There's just no address here, Ms. Green. I don't know where it is, but. "West Washington Street. Install one J.O. pole on West Washington Street beginning at a point approximately 250 feet east of the center line of the intersection of West Washington Street and Franklin Street. Install new pole 203-50 at approximately 42.055706-70.906409", which is a lot to unpack, and I'm not really quite sure what that all means, except that it's on West Washington. And that we mailed seven days before a hearing, written notice of the time and place of the hearing to each of the owners of the real estate along the ways or parts of ways of which the company is permitted to erect the poles, wires, fixtures, under said order. So we have with us a representative from National Grid. And you're from National Grid, but this is for both National Grid and Verizon?
Yes.
Okay. So what can you tell us about this?
Yeah, so basically, National Grid is looking to improve reliability in the area by installing a re-closer device on top of this new misstand pole that they closed. A re-closer device is basically able to sectionalize the lines so that in the case of an outage due to a storm or a tree falling, you know, there will be less outages in the area and it will be affect, they won't affect areas further from the point of impact and those houses can, you know, maintain power. Misstand pole needs to be installed before this device because the two adjacent poles already have equipment on top of there, which basically makes it impossible to install that one device on those poles. And the general three poles that we discussed are at the beginning of the opening for the source, so it's the ideal position to install the device in.
Okay, and is there anybody that is in a butter or is impacted by this that's here that has any concerns? Have you guys heard from anybody in writing or otherwise that might have a concern? Okay. Were there any questions that anybody had for this gentleman regarding the pole installation? What you're saying, so I'm glad that you're doing it on West Washington Street. We should do it all over town. Because we, as you know, I think if somebody sneezes, we lose power. I wish I was joking, but I'm not. It's so, um, I don't, I'm struggling to find the right diplomatic word. It's so problematic that almost everybody that is able to goes out and gets a standby generator. So I really think you guys need to do better about this. And we've had you come and we've talked to you about that before. So I support what you're doing, but I hope you're going to do more of it. Did anybody have anything that they wanted to?
How long does the project take to complete?
I think the exact estimate, I believe now we will send this off. So I work for a firm that is hired by National Grid to design this entire process. So once we get this approval, we will then send our design to National Grid. And then from then on, they will begin constructing, go send it on to their staff.
Okay, and this also is permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as said, as each of the said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. We would also love Verizon to improve service too, but that, you're not from Verizon, so we can't say much about that. Okay, anything else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve the petition from National Grid and Verizon regarding the location we discussed.
Salute.
Set. And roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay, fantastic. All right, thank you so much. And we will sign this and we will get it, please contact our town administrators and she will make sure that she gets you the executed document.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the Memorial Day Parade approved. I think this might be two separate items. Discuss annual Memorial Day Parade and then separate item, approve Hanson Day. So Ms. Green, what say you about annual Memorial Day?
Okay, so our Veterans Agent, Joe Gombachus, sent me a schedule today that people can see. The festivities, they'll start coordinating and lining up about 9:45 on the 27th of May. There'll be a brief ceremony at the school. They will have the parade that will travel from the Indian Head School to the Fern Hill Cemetery. There'll be a stop at Town Hall. The main ceremony at the cemetery will have an opening prayer, reading of the Governor's Proclamation. They are going to have a guest speaker, which is a very high military official, I believe is a general. And then there'll be reading of the veterans' names who have passed away this year and an closing prayer. So all of the, all of the basic initial parade is intact. So there may be more to come, and now we just want to hope that we have wonderful weather for that day.
And is Mr. Gombachus looking for the Select Board to help with the laying of the wreaths as he does every year?
I would gather that he would be looking for that. He may not have gotten to that point yet, but he will, I'll see if he's able to join us next Tuesday to give a little bit more details on some of the wreath laying and things like that.
Well, and I sincerely hope that the widows are going to be there because they are very profound, amazing.
Do you know if we have a band for transportation?
Do you know he's been working with, I believe, Whitman Hanson Band? So I don't know if he has secured them yet, but I know that he is talking.
I think it's our year. It's supposed to be every other year.
What about busing? I think last year we secured some busing to get some folks.
I have not heard about anything like that yet, but I will double check with him.
Okay. Any further discussion about that? Any questions? Okay. And then Hanson Day, the Economic Development Committee would like to have, there's just a tweak here, would like to have Hanson Day on September 28th up at the Indian Head School. The purpose, this will be a joint effort with the Hanson Business Network. And the purpose is really to showcase all the businesses in Hanson, try to support them, and then the nonprofit groups, you know, can come in as we did last year. So it's a free event for everybody in Hanson. All the best of Hanson. And that's what it's all about. So I will entertain a motion to approve Hanson Day for September 28th. Oh, Mr. Yeah.
Just a little confusion. I see item nine is also related to Hanson Day.
I'm just giving you a note that I had on my war that.
It's the same thing.
But it's a different day.
I just clarified that it's the 28th is the date.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
So make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll set it up.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. All right, and that brings us to town meeting. So discuss May 8th, 2024, school committee meeting regarding assessment. So as you know, at our May 6th town meeting, we had an override in the warrant that did not pass, which meant that we needed to look at what did Whitman do? Because that kind of, both towns sort of have to coordinate, if you will, or we've got to disconnect and then there's a path. So Whitman did not pass the override because they chose to fund at town meeting through the use of one-time free cash. So that left a disconnect where Hanson did not pass the override to pay for the 2.68% above what we had budgeted. Whitman did pass the budget that was assessed. And so now we've got this dissonance, I'll call it. So the next step is, that goes back to the school committee. The school committee says, okay, there's disconnect here. The town of Hanson voted not to support the override, not to support that additional amount for the assessment. Whitman voted yes. The school committee voted to stick with the same assessment that we had been dealing with before. So that leaves us short the same amount of money that we were short when we proposed the override. So we have 45 days from the date that we are told what the reconsidered assessment is. And I believe that was last Wednesday or Thursday, whatever. It's a day or two, one way or the other. So that gives us 45 days to hold another town meeting. And I know one of the things that people have been saying is the Select Board should just say no to the school committee. That's not an option. We can't just say no. If we do nothing, it de facto, that assessment is in effect and without any ability for us to determine how to pay for that or having any input from voters on how to pay for that, the Select Board doesn't set the assessment. All that we are able to do is to propose from whence the funds will come to pay for that assessment that we are given. If people have got concerns about the assessment, and I have heard that there are concerns clearly, they ought to be speaking to the school committee and they ought to be going to the school committee meetings. We have no ability to lower our own assessment. If we had that ability, we would have done it before now. We wouldn't be here. So they are separately elected committee. They are doing their job. We are doing our job. Sometimes we are able to do those things harmoniously. In this case, it seems that it's going to be a little bit more of a difficult path. We got a very, you know, again, it was, it did not pass at town meeting by, I think it was roughly 100 and something votes. So I think it was like, yeah, it was roughly about 100 and some odd votes. So town meeting spoke, so we don't have an override. So we've, of course, circled back with our town council, circled back with our town clerk because we've got to talk about when do we post, what's our timing, because we do not want to be in a position where we're not responding within the 45 days. That is not something we want to do. So we, Ms. Sloan, do you want to tell us what your timeline is just for everybody? I know we've exchanged emails, but.
It should be obviously in June. We have to have a 14-day period to post the warrant.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what you got to call the town meeting, but I just need 14 days for the warrant to be posted.
In the 45 days, what is the?
The 29th of June.
Okay. So, so we need, that would be like the worst-case scenario, 29th of June. So we need to at least post by the 15th of June, right? 14 days before then? I'm saying worst-case scenario, if we're playing worst-case scenario. Okay, I think that, so there's only, there's only so many things that we can do to fund this budget. There's not like magical money coming out of, you know, thin air. So we've got, we could ask for an override again. Okay, there's that. We could ask for, we could see if we could fund it from free cash, which would put us in an extremely vulnerable position should anything come up. Because we're way down on our cash. We, I think people have spoken publicly in meetings indicating we've got 1.4 million in free cash. We do not. We have, Mr. Kinsheriff, how much?
127,000.
Yeah. So that's what we have right now in free cash. So obviously, if we are paying $350,000 out of our free cash, that would be a bit perilous for us to do that. And I'm basing this on Mr. Kinsheriff's comments. So we could fund everything from free cash. We could fund some of it from free cash and make some cuts at Town Hall and in other departments. We could, modest cuts, but more free cash, modest cuts. We could free cash, maybe a little more drastic cuts. Free cash, even more drastic cuts, or just cuts and no free cash. So, Mr. Kinsheriff.
So. All right. So I've been thinking about this a lot. So.
Oh, and I'm sorry. Can you just announce who you are?
I'm a Kinsheriff Town Accountant.
Okay.
I'm a Kinsheriff Town Accountant. Okay. So like we said, we have 627,000 in free cash. So let me start by saying, the budget as constituted used 794,000 in free cash just to fund this year's budget. So all things given equal, we'd have to cut 800,000 already from next year's budget, even if the override did pass. So number two is, if we have to fund the schools, I can't in good conscience recommend anything other than budget cuts, you know, to fund it. And the reason is, it's like, it's twofold. One is, it's 372,000 we'll have to come up with. And after plenary, looking at like what we'd have to cut, I mean, it'd be like hours, positions, like it'd be in effect. And I can't even imagine looking at the 372, going next year and doing the same thing for 800,000. If we did nothing and we just spent the free cash, we'd be looking at 1.1 million. It would just be unconscionable in my mind. It'd be like irresponsible to do it because it would just be, I know how, I can't even imagine doing that from scratch. So I think in order to really be physically responsible this year in front of budget, it's going to have to come from budget cuts if we have to do it that way. The other part of it is, if the 372 passes as the new assessment, that becomes the new base. So now next year, we're starting 372,000 more on the whole again, and that compounds itself. So the whole idea of having this 5% is that we'd have, it would be fair, I mean, our revenue's only 3%, so 5% seemed like it was a good middle ground. I mean, we're really stretching it to 5%, but there's no way you can do long-term fiscal planning if you don't have, you don't know what your fixed costs are from year to year. Like if it's going to be 5, is it going to be 7% a year? You know, whatever it's going to be per year. Or if it's going to be 7% a year, it's going to be like a zero-sum game. As one department gets bigger, the other ones shrink. So the long and short of it is, if we end up in a position where we're forced to fund the school assessment, my advice would be to cut the current year budget by an equal amount. So.
Okay, so, and just to be clear, town meeting could still vote that down? And so let's talk about that. So if we present that or any combination or any of the things we just discussed, it's still up to the voters at town meeting. And if that's voted down at town meeting, then we still have the same process that we just discussed where we go, the school committee says, okay, you know, we're being asked to reconsider the assessment because there's a disconnect. And then again, if they vote that they're going to stick with that same assessment, then we're looking at a super town meeting. Which I'm not sure we've ever had a super town meeting, but you know, but, excuse me, Mr. Hill? Okay, thank you. So, and I don't think this was necessarily on anybody's wish list for this year, but if that's what happens, then that's what happens. And it won't be for lack of us, of this board, trying to be cooperative, try to do the right thing, you know, try to, you know, it's just the way that the process will work. So.
Yeah, so I just can't in good conscience, even remotely even, as much as we didn't like to do the 794, I can't even in good conscience, you know. I would like to see, like, we have 627,000 in free cash. I mean, my thought was, just a thought is, take 100,000 of that, put in an unemployment trust fund for projections of next year, just in case we do have layoffs next year. Take 500,000 of it and put in a stabilization fund because we know it's going to be a disaster next year. In case an override doesn't pass, whatever, we've got to have some sort of backup. So that would be my thought.
So I had a question about that, if you don't mind, because you brought up. So this has come up at where I, where I work. Unemployment costs. I think sometimes that gets forgotten. So if you were to lay off a bunch of people for whatever reason, you're still paying for that, right?
Yeah, you take like 30% of unemployment cost. So if you lay off 100,000 salary, you potentially liable for 30,000.
Right, so at the end of the day.
You save 100,000 on one end and then you've got to add 30,000 unemployment budget.
Right, so if you're talking about people's jobs, it's not as easy as saying the number, I think it's fair to say that the number one salary line, the number one line item that eats up a lot of the expenses is salary. So the only place you can really cut is salary. And I think it's a misnomer that if you cut salary, AKA people, that somehow the town saves. That is not true.
Well, you do save some, like if you cut somebody with 100,000, they're potentially liable for 30,000, so you're saving 7,000.
You don't save 100% of what you save.
You don't save 100%.
Exactly. So you actually have to cut more people than you actually do. Exactly. So you're actually losing way more services and way more people by making personnel cuts than you actually think you are.
The only, the only positive, you can say that's positive, is that unemployment costs, that'll be just for that one year. But next year, you have less people to fund it and no unemployment costs associated with it.
Right, you're talking two years old.
Right, right.
Yeah, what is the sweet spot number that we're supposed to be at for free cash?
Well, the free cash should be probably like, I'd say, you know, 10% of the, 10% of like the overall budget would probably be.
Are you thinking about stabilization?
Or fund.
Yeah, exactly. Because that's going to cost us money to, if something happens.
And the way the auditors look at it, they look at your free cash flush as stabilization fund. So that's why by doing appropriation from free cash to stabilization fund, the outside investors are going to look at it the same way. They kind of like it because, I mean, needed two-thirds vote to get it out and it's, then it's in there. So, I mean, I think that would probably be a good idea. And the other thing is, if some emergency happened, like in June, in July, and August, we didn't have the free cash recertified, by putting the extra in the stabilization fund, you could use that as a funding source. If not, you have to wait for free cash to be certified. So that was just like, to me, by leaving unexpendated free cash at the forefront of stabilization fund, it still has the same financial impact, except it's a little bit more forced discipline when you put in a stabilization fund because there's a higher, higher hoop to jump through to get the money out.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan, I don't think you've had a chance to hear Mr. Kinsheriff's thoughts, but I'm just.
Yeah, we spoke earlier.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, and I know FinCom hasn't met or voted on this, but like, what's your gut reaction from a Fin?
So Eric and I talked about this earlier. From a mathematical standpoint, he's absolutely correct, right? But what we've used in the past is you look at one person, the head count is $90,000. So you're talking about four, laying off four people from the other side. So that's, you know, I don't know if Town Hall has four people lose. I don't know if, you know, do we want to lose four police officers, four firefighters? I completely understand what Eric's saying and, but we always look at about $90,000 per person you lay off. That's what you're saying. And it's not exact. It was an estimate we used from a while ago. But, you know, I think the vote this Saturday is going to give us a very good indicator of what our options are for. If by some remarkable chance it's approved, the override is approved on the ballot, we can have town meeting take another bite of the apple and try and do another override, which, to be honest, is the best, is the only way to fill this gap is an override. I understand people don't want to pay higher taxes, but we're talking $92,000, you know, to your tax bill. And I don't like paying higher taxes. I understand, you know, people see it as government adding more and more and more on their backs, but it's just the price, unfortunately now, it's the price of years, you know, 10, 15 years of not properly funding, you know, Town Hall and all departments. We've gotten and finally to a place where I think we're providing the maximum amount of services while keeping our taxes below us around. We still have incredibly low taxes. We only, you know, revenue is, our revenue is very small. So I think a lot of this depends on the vote on Saturday. And if it doesn't pass, then we have to look at some sort of mixture, in my opinion, of, you know, all free cash, no free cash. And that's, I think, what we'll probably analyze. And I would implore people, if it does pass at the ballot, if you go back to town meeting, pass the override. It's, I hate it that the schools prove they don't want to be a good partner to us.
Right.
So we're going to have to take this one on the chin again. But I would say, you know, I understand the philosophical stand that was made at town meeting. I applaud it. People stood up. They were for what they wanted. But if it comes back down, we're talking about cutting services. And to be honest, Eric's plan probably is the one that's the best to do. You know, the other way we'd be using free cash as an emotional spend. So.
Well, it's an emotional spend and a quick fix.
It's a quick.
But it's a steeper cliff next year if we.
Yes, and you, you know, you all saw the consultant's report, Mr. Mann's report. He's talking about $5 billion in overrides needed to carry us through, I think, the next, through what, 2029?
Yeah.
Through fiscal year 2029. He said, right now, we need $5 billion in overrides just to keep us on pace with everything else. So, you know, I think that's what we're going to, we're going to take a good hard look at what happens this Saturday, and then we'll have to, you know, all sit down, Eric will talk scenarios.
And I might add, you know, we haven't said what, but I think tonight we probably should set the date just so we can get that ball in motion. But I agree, as far as like, how could we make a decision tonight without the benefit of knowing what the outcome is at the ballot? I think I know what it's going to be, but I don't know. Mr. Hill had, yeah.
I'm very confused about the ballot question. And I think many, many people listening are. Most people I've talked to have believed it is moot since we said no at town meeting and the whole, the question about the bucket and then how.
Well, okay, the analogy definitely was a failed analogy. I, it was a bit mystifying, but, but I will say that I think what, and we'll refer to Town Council, but I think what Ms. Federoff was trying to say is that town meeting's not voting a dollar amount because it didn't, you know, didn't pass, that override didn't pass. So if on, now, this was before we knew we were going to have to have another town meeting. So if things had gone sequentially, the way that they typically do, which is you've got town meeting first and then town election second, then town meeting decides the dollar amount and then the ballot decides. meeting decides the dollar amount, and then the ballot decides whether in fact you're going to be able to do that with the two and a half override. If they both fail, then it fails. In this case, you could have something weird happen. You could have the override fail, which we know happened at town meeting, but the ballot passed, and in which case, then you've opened the ability for an override, the two and a half, and at the next town meeting, you'd be able to vote without having to wait to go to another ballot, because you would have already opened that up. Does that make any sense?
You know, it makes sense to me. I'm just hoping that it makes sense
Okay.
to, to others. I don't know what that was.
I don't want to refer to you as Alex, but I just can't, I can't recall your last name, so, so.
Castro.
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Castro, could you, um, tell us, um, how that works with the override having failed and the ballot being, um, the ballot vote being held this Saturday? In the sequence, just.
I'm sorry, well, hello, I just want to refer to you properly.
Okay, what, what did you hear? Should I repeat everything?
The, um, the last few sentences would be great.
That would be everything, okay. Um, okay, so could you, um, could you try to help everybody understand, and please don't use an analogy of using in class, um, if you could, could you tell us when things are happening out of order as they will be happening now, where we've, um, override failed, now we've got on the ballot an override, a prop two and a half question, which may or may not pass? Can you walk us down the path, if that question fails at, um, at the ballot, then we're dead in the water, that's fine, okay? If it passes on Saturday, and then we hold the town meeting, and it, and we have an override question on the town meeting warrant, what happens?
So, so you said, so the, the override passes, there's an override question, the town meeting warrant, just because you have to, you know, you have to follow the procedure and do it within the forty-five days?
No, no, um, you know.
What does the ballot question do that?
Yeah, you know what? I think there's something in here. Lisa, was there a piece that Kate put together? And I apologize, it typically would have passed.
There's an Excel spreadsheet that I think you might be referring to?
No, there was, no, there was actually a bulleted piece that I think you had worked on, um.
That is the one, yeah. I have that in front of me. If you guys, if you guys want to refer to that specifically,
Yeah, where is that?
we can have a look at it. I, I have it in front of me right now.
All right, so, oh, thanks, all right, it's beginning here. Um, okay, so, um, so, we've got, uh, time in the budget school committee, we know that, um, to, I don't know if this specifically gets into that. Um, all right, let's see if we can get our decoder rings on and use the, uh, matrix here. Um, my understanding, based on my conversations with Kate this last week, um, last week, is that what I just described to you, Mr. Kinsheriff, yes?
So I think, um, basically, the town meeting doesn't have to vote for an override twice. Like, they're not voting for an override. If the override does pass, then that's going to create some space in the tax levy. If the override does pass.
Exactly.
You could put an article at town meeting to say, I'm going to raise and appropriate this amount for the schools, and you'll be able to do it.
That, we're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
So that, that's it. And then, um, that's, that's all. And if, if the override doesn't pass, then we can't do it. We've only have free cash or budget cuts to fund it.
And Ms. Sloan, do you agree with that? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, all right, so Mr. Hill, is that responsive to your question? I know it wasn't your question.
Yeah, I believe so. I'm not sure if, I, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about this. I'm not sure how to get.
There was, there's quite a bit of misunderstanding. And one of the things that we're, I'm going to say, is we still, we're not dealing with the elephant in the room. I realize this board can't deal with the elephant in the room, but people have to get more involved with the school committee, and they have to make their wishes known to the school committee, because we can't fix it. We can't fix it. I would love to fix it. You have no idea how much I'd like to fix it, but we can't. So the elephant in the room, we're told that we're irresponsible and not being good partners, but at the same time, where's their partnership? Where's their cutting of their budgets? Where, where are they looking at what they're doing and trying to be a better partner to the two towns involved? That's all I have to say.
Well, and I would, I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I would say, and we've said this before, it's our job to represent all of the citizens in town.
Yes, it is.
And I think that, um, I think we've got a very strong message at town meeting
Yep.
that the five percent that we were communicating was as much as people felt comfortable doing.
Yep.
I, I mean, so it isn't like we're just going AWOL here as a board and just deciding we're going to willy-nilly set it at five percent. This is the message that we're getting from the people that we represent. So I, I, you know, so it, it really, and I understand that the school committee feels that they've got a responsibility to, um, advocate for the kids and do what they need to do, but, you know, we've got a limited budget. Mr. Kinsheriff told you, um, you know, and he, he wasn't being dramatic, because he's actually not even prone to drama, um, you know, that we're, we're really looking at a really problematic situation, um, that's only going to get worse. We're a small town. We don't have a lot of revenue sources. We're not, you know, we don't have Route Eighteen. Well, I'm not diminishing anything. Look, I'm active in the Hanson Business Network, economic development. We're trying, okay? But that's, we're never going to be, you know, like a Pembroke, or, you know, like, uh, Abington or Whitman. They've got their own thing going on, and good for them, but we don't have that revenue. Um, it's on the back of, of our residents. It's, it's, we're like, a very high percentage of our revenue. And, um, we, and we've got some growth. We've got some modest growth going on with some of the developments that are happening, but it's just not going to, um, you know, and I think, as, um, you know, Mr. Kinsheriff and Mr. Sullivan both, both said, you know, for budget planning purposes, we need to have a, a responsible dialogue and predictable amount that we can budget. And we tried to do that this year. We really tried in all earnestness, um, to work with the town of Whitman. Um, and quite honestly, we even got flak about the five percent. I'm going to be honest with you. We, we got flak about the five percent. So, you know, then we have people taking potshots at us from the school committee, saying that we're not doing enough, and we're not being, you know, we're not showing leadership skills, because we're not, we're not trying to advocate for more. Um, and we're just trying to do the best we can. We're trying to advocate for everybody in town, okay? That's our job. Not one particular group of constituents versus another. Everybody, what's best for the town, okay? We presented the override, it failed. Now, now we have to deal with the second vote of the school committee, that's our job. I think for me, for, I, I agree with Mr. Sullivan. I think we need to wait to see what Saturday brings. I have my own deep-seated suspicions, but I'm, I'm going to, not going to call on the universe on us. Um, and, and then I think next Tuesday, we make a decision about, um, what we're going to place in the warrant, but I think tonight, we can set the date. Um.
I just want to just add to that, which I agree with everything you're saying, but at the last school committee meeting, of the Hanson representatives, how many of them voted for the assessment?
All of them.
All of them.
Right. So going into the, the town meeting, I heard over and over and over again, we're going to let the people decide. I'm putting this as, as the assessment, let the people decide, let the people decide. Over a hundred people said, no, we don't want that, and then they got kicked back, and then immediately afterwards, they said, okay, all of us unanimously, we're not going to move on it.
I, I, yes.
And as a result of that, it defers responsibility to us. And to your point, it, it puts us in a bad spot, because we are trying to turn over every single rock. I have never seen somebody try to make as many moves as Eric. I will sing your praises forever, because no, nobody works harder than you. And you've tried every which way, you've tried to be creative. Kevin, you and your team have done fantastic at town hall. Everyone's tried to do everything to try to figure this out. And it goes back to saying these really, in my opinion, they're just hollow words. We're going to go and let the people decide. They decide, and then you do the exact same thing unanimously. They're the ones that are supposed to be, they were elected. We're not, we weren't elected to put together that, a budget of that assessment, but we're elected to fix it and to deal with the consequences of those things. So when we go there in a good faith effort, and someone says, well, we're going to put this out there, because we want to let the people decide. The people decide overwhelmingly, and then you do the exact same thing, and then kick it back and say, just figure it out. What are we supposed to figure out?
So just to be clear, you're saying the members of the school committee had said at the la, the last time the assessment was set.
The last two times.
Right, right. They said, let's let the voters decide. Because I, I have to be, um, I have, I have to be honest. We, um, many of us were very surprised. We have some, several very conservative members on the school committee who were voted in by Hanson voters to be conservative.
Yes, to represent, be conservative with tax dollars. And all they're doing is kicking it to us.
They kick the can down the road.
And I really want to drive this point home, because I'm, I'm really tired of it. Because this, this board, I'm, I'm, I'm proud of the work that everyone's done. I have no ill will towards the, towards the school committee. Everyone's heard me say, we have to come together. The Whitman Select Board's tried everything that they can do. But we have this circular argument, where it's always like, well, the Select Board did this, and the Select Board did that. We've tried every single thing we can to possibly try to make this work, and all we're doing is having somebody say, at least when I say we're going to go and we're going to put something on the warrant, and we're going to have the voters decide, there's always a solution that follows it. If it doesn't work, then we're going to try this. And if that doesn't work, we're going to try this. But to simply say, we're going to let the voters decide, they decide, and then you do the same thing, what do you want the answer to be? So I'm, my, my plea to the Hanson elected officials on the school committee is, what is your solution? Why are we coming up with it? What is the solution? Because we're the ones that have to make the cuts. We're the ones that have to ask the townspeople a second time, a third time, to go in their pockets that they can't afford. Unless you say, we want to let the people decide, and we're going to give a solution to back that up, I don't want to hear it. You can't. Because how many, we have Whitman people here. How many people from the, from the, from the school committee are from Whitman? Yeah, we got them.
We have four.
Yeah.
Well, no, I think Joe's, yeah.
Where are they? Because I, I, what I'd like to ask is them, what is the solution? Because telling us and putting it on, on Eric's back, or on Lisa's, or on, on anybody here, is to say, okay, we're going to make some budget cuts. Like, it's easy. You're going to find that? And to your point, it's not three hundred thousand, it's a million. And even, back on that, to Kevin's point, which you've been, you've been such a good advocate for this, it's even bigger than that. So sit here and put barriers up and act like it's fine, like, oh, it's just a number we're kicking back? No, it's not.
And Joe, I would say, I, of course, echo everything you've just said, but I would also say, it's not just on the backs of Eric and Lisa.
No.
It's on the back of the taxpayers, because we're going to have loss of services.
Right.
I mean, we're literally talking about not replacing people in a department of five.
It's, it's, it's approaching forty percent with people on fixed income in the town. I know that some people out there hate when I say that, because you, you tell me about it all the time, but it's the truth.
It's the truth.
It's the truth. If, if you're, if you're taking it from forty percent of people on fixed income, and you're saying, well, it's for the kids. Well, the kids are also dependent. You have two folks, two ends of the same spectrum, that are a hundred percent dependent upon the people that are supposed to represent them, yet ours is the one that's always full. Where is the school committee? There are four elected officials over there, and they keep saying the same thing, and it keeps resulting in no actual change. And I, I really want answers to that. I, that's my thing at this point. And I'm, and I'm going to keep pushing this, and pushing this, and pushing this. Because if you're someone that says, I want it for X amount of reasons, we're not funding it enough, we have a great, we have a letter in here that you could read into the record, at least it gives me an example as to why they want to push it even higher. At least they have the ability to, to articulate that. Otherwise, they just say, we're just going to let the voters decide. They already did. And you did the exact same thing.
I do, I.
They need to lay some people off.
I'm, I'm sorry, what did you just say?
I said they need to lay some people off over there.
Unfortunately, but, but we have.
That's not the position we're in.
You're right, though.
I know we're not, but
Yeah.
obviously, they're not going to do what we should do.
Right, so it gets kicked to us, and then we're the ones that have to make decisions.
And we're the boogeymen. We're the boogeymen.
And it's, it's not, I mean, we, we volunteered to be in a position like this, so it is what it is, but.
People would want our money. We didn't, we didn't tell them to do that, they did it.
Yep.
Well, they got too many. They should get rid of some.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have any control over that.
I know we don't, but.
And, um, um, just, just, I, I know, yeah, just a second. Um, we don't have any control over that. Um, we're left with the, you know, um, the collateral damage of, of trying to figure out.
It's just a diffusion of responsibility. You're playing with people's tax money. You're playing with people's lives. It's hard enough to afford things right now, and to believe this level of uncertainty, and to say that you actually are paying attention when you had town meeting last week and they told you what the answer was? I, I, I don't buy into it anymore. It's frustrating, obviously.
Yes, it was a little bit astounding. Um, did you guys have anything else you wanted to say? Um, just a second, Mr. Young, we'll get to you. Um, anything else?
I can't second Joe's, you know, opinion. I mean, you say, leave it to the voters, the voters tell you. You can't then come back and say, you know, the voters, you say, leave it to the voters, the voters give you an answer, don't come back to us asking for a different answer.
Four out of four said, we're going to do the same thing over.
Thanks, guys. Um, Mr. Young?
Yeah, just a quick question. Maybe the town, town council can help with this too.
You might have to call up to the mic. I don't think he can hear you.
Yeah, there's some, some auditory issues here. Oh, God. Okay.
Okay.
We weren't prepared for that, Mr. Young.
It's all long enough to, to get.
If the vote on the, on, at the.
Can you hear him, Alex?
Not, not very well.
I'm, I'm thinking you might, and I can't believe I'm actually saying this to you, but I'm thinking you might need to.
His mic is here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We get the signal.
Thanks, everyone.
Uh, just a quick question. If the vote on the ballot question is an overwhelming no, okay, and it goes back to the school committee, and it's a real heavy, oh, this is hypothetical, and it, and it goes back to the school committee for a second time.
So it, down at the town meeting, it gets voted down again.
Right, it went back to the school committee, they kept the assessment the same, now it comes back to you, okay, and you're saying you're going to wait for the ballot question. It was an overwhelming, um, voter presence at that, at that election, and it's an overwhelming vote, no, not to support the, the override, which is basically not to support in, in place of the, of the.
Dead in the water, we're not going to approach override.
Okay, it has to go back to the school committee. Does the school committee have a choice at that point to either lower the assessment or send it to a super town meeting?
It doesn't go back to, based on the ballot, the town meeting result.
That, that's correct.
The ballot isn't going to go back for, for it to be reconsidered.
Oh, okay, so.
Do you know what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying, so if it goes no on the ballot, then you have to go to the.
If it's no on the ballot, the only thing it's really going to impact is maybe what we decide to do as far as offering an article at town meeting. It's not going to really, like, it, it doesn't go back to the school for them to reconsider it. The only reconsiderations are done by virtue of what is decided at town meeting.
Yeah, because if that went on the ballot, they had to go back to the 372,000, last money in the assessment, which was in that second column at the town meeting.
Correct.
Okay, and so then you're going to have to decide based on that outcome, how independent. And your choice is either go with another override, or
Rest of the country.
or make calls, start the cuts in free cash. Okay, that's what I wanted to understand.
Yep.
Okay. But everything we got in override questions and the results, and the question that you had, everybody had about the ballot, you can go online to, the, the, there are guidelines, guidelines on proposition twenty-five override questions, okay? That's when, when I was on the chairman of the board, I used to tell everybody what their options were. When, when the schools would come, and when they were looking for that three million dollar override, that's where you find all, you find all those things.
Provided us with that information. Okay, you missed it, young. Did that answer your question?
No.
Okay, awesome. Um, okay, um, any other, oh, yes, and if you could just say.
It's the one on State Street.
I'm sorry?
It's on this, the one on State Street.
Okay, yep.
I'm just wondering, is there a website that we can go to to see what this actual override money is being spent on? Is it for children, is it for supplies?
The school budget is online. Um, I mean, I'm not on the school committee, obviously.
That's a great question.
Yeah, no, um, I, we've got a representative from the Whitman School Committee here. Perhaps she could tell you where that is found.
Three hundred and five.
It's, I know it's on the Whitman Hanson Regional School District, and I think they might even have a budget tab that you can click on.
They do.
Yep.
That they're looking for is actually going to be spent.
Yes, it, it detailed.
Yes, no, you can't earmark money.
What that.
Yeah.
Oh, what the additional three hundred and seven, no.
You can't, because it, it goes into a general fund. There's, you can't earmark funds like that, so.
Where do they come up with that number? Where do they come up with that number?
That was my presentation responding. It wasn't the school committee that determined that 372,000. It was the town of Hanson deciding how they were gonna fund the assessment, which was voted by the school committee. So this chair, Pennant, is correct in saying, the school committee votes the assessment, and the town decides how they will fund that dollar amount. And it was the town that decided.
So she's saying that 370, yeah.
They come up with that fund.
Yeah, that's, they came up with the overall budget. We were the ones who said, look, we can only do 5%. So then the delta between what they were assessing us, which was the 7.68, and the 5% is that 300, you know.
All right, but I think what he's looking for is a break, he's looking for a breakdown.
If you want the budget breakdown.
He's looking for a breakdown.
I'll give you an idea about this, just in a, in a very, very.
Administration.
In a very, very fundamental way, they will give you a budget. There is a budget that exists, and there's a whole series of calculations. You can go back in the minutes if you really wanna go. And there's a tab on the Whitman Hanson website that kind of breaks some of the stuff down. You can't earmark funds. And what makes it difficult is that even though the school department is its own authority, they're all independent, and they come up with their own budgets, they have a budget that rivals the operating budget for the town. They're a non-revenue generating service, even though they have to present a budget. So where the rub comes is, they use those calculations and previous, you know, budgets and future projections to come up with a budget, but they have no way to fund it. So that's where we come in, because they have to ask us to fund it, because we're the only ones that can actually raise and appropriate funds. And that's where the rub comes.
Well, after, yeah, through the checks.
That's what I'm saying. Like, it's a huge, I'm giving you way, way fundamental stuff. But at the end of the day, you can look at it, no one can tell you, and if they do tell you this, they're lying, that you can take a bucket of money and say, this is where it's going. You can't do it. Because under no circumstances, when you put a bunch of money into a budget, you would know where those dollars are going. Doesn't matter whether it's $10 or $10 million, you can't, you don't know. And that's why typically, when you can try and track funds, it goes to earmarks or revolving accounts, and earmarks are essentially illegal, so you really can't do that stuff.
The budget is, no, so.
We'll give you approved budget, so you know where all of the.
Just to clarify, it's a proposed budget. So they're saying, if you give us this money, this is how we propose to use it. Now, whether in fact, that money is used in the same way that is being proposed, is an entirely different question. But their budget is the proposed budget, and that is out on the Whitman Hanson Regional School District.
And you also can't track individual dollars. It's not, it's a lump. And then, and then the budget.
Because you can't earmark funds.
But to get to that lump, they must have some kind of.
Yes, they do, yes.
Right, it's the line item budget.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It's the actual budget.
There's detail on that. Okay, so you can see expenses by school, salaries by line, supplies, maintenance.
But to his point, you won't be able to see like $300,000 and say it's going.
I've lost complete control of the meeting. It's just like, we've jumped the track, but it's okay. Mr. Young, did you wanna say something? You had your hand up.
No.
You're at a loss for words.
Okay. Did that answer your question? I mean, we tried. Okay, all right.
I think that what really has, do we not have in the works an audit of that?
We have a forensic audit. And we do have a forensic audit. It took us quite a while to get somebody to respond to our request for a forensic audit. We do not know entirely why. We have our suspicions, but, and thanks, Sean. And so we do have a forensic audit with the town of Whitman that we have funded together to look at certain items that are kind of responsive to what you're asking, which is, if certain funds are, we're being told money's gonna be used in this way, was it used in that way? Now, we obviously can't forensically go through every single dime. That would cost us millions of dollars to do that over the, you know, course of years. But we're picking some strategic things like grant money, improvements on, you know, on buildings. If they're saying that they need money for capital improvement things, it is the money that we're being asked for, being spent on in that way. So we're going through and looking at those items. And I don't know, Ms. Green, if you can give us like a flyby on when we might see something on that, because we're getting a little off track on it, but I just thought it would be helpful, because somebody brought it up.
I don't have an update on, I know they had a meeting scheduled. I believe it was probably the beginning of May.
So you're saying our auditor.
The auditor, we have reached out to the superintendent to schedule a meeting. I don't know if that meeting took place or not, I haven't heard yet, but I believe it was right around the beginning of May.
Okay.
So they are, they are moving forward with this.
Because we do have questions. It's a huge budget. And we, and like, for our budget, we've got insight. We know how the money's being spent, because we have our own auditor that comes in, and the district does, too. I don't, I don't wanna indicate that they don't. But they look at different things than we might be interested in looking at. And so it's sort of a trust but verified type of thing. We just wanna make sure, you know. And we've had enough questions over the years come up that, you know, we've gotten from, from people out there and even just amongst ourselves, that we thought that, but it, it's taken us, I wanna say, four years to get this, maybe I'm exaggerating, three years maybe to get, yeah, okay, to actually get somebody to respond to our RFP, to actually do this audit, and then to make inroads and talk to the district and get them to agree to work with us on getting those answers. So, here's Mr. Young.
I was curious, Neil and I talked, how many actually revolving budgets?
That's one of the, that's one of the questions. What we're trying to do is, and hopefully we'll achieve it to some level, but again, we have a budget. This isn't like, you know, we didn't say to the auditor, hey, you know, go crazy, we've got a budget. But what we're trying to do is, those things that are less conspicuous in the budget, we wanna drill down a little bit into those and find out, okay, you know, the revolving accounts, this little account here, what are, what are those amounts and how are they being spent? And is it being included in the budget when it's being presented to us? So that's what we're working on, so.
Can I ask you one last plug? I just think that, and I'll drop it after this. I just think that when it comes to the spending of money, raising and appropriating funds, a lot of people show up to these meetings. But this is when it comes down to the 11th hour, you really need to be attending these school committee meetings, because that's where it's actually being addressed and the number is being created and presented. So you're catching it at the tail end. If you really wanna get your input in, you have to go to those meetings and prioritize those. They are, in my opinion, more important than the meeting that we're doing right now, because we're really trying to find it and collaborate. But it starts at the very beginning, when those conversations first start, so.
All right, well, thank you. So, did anybody have any other questions? Yes, and if you could just state who you are.
I would say, I'm high street.
Yeah.
If the school committee came back and said, the increase is 15%.
That's, you mean, if we go back and say, could you reconsider it?
Yeah, do you know?
Oh.
What is the law? Because I'm hearing, all I'm hearing is, we can't do this, we can't do that, we can't do anything. So it's like, they don't generate money, I'm not picking them. But.
They, well, I don't wanna get technical, but they do generate some money, they just don't pay for themselves, you know, like, they do have some income, you know, but yeah. I know I'll get a hard time from.
It's a consequence issue.
My point is, 7.6, which I believe you said is what they were asking.
7.28, yep.
Yeah. If that was 15, is it the same thing, they just sit there and say, well, we gotta have the money?
Basically, yeah. That's what they do.
And it's like, we just.
I see what you're saying. Like, is there, is there a cap? Is there anything like?
Starts on the people that you elect. That's the people we need, we need to have people that wanna go there.
The people on the school committee have to start to stand up and fight for the townspeople that they're supposed to represent.
Instead of going over there and just yesing them to death.
So all they're doing is saying yes.
So, no, there is no cap. There's literally no cap. Not that I'm aware of, anyway. I've, and I've looked at it pretty closely.
It seems like a silly thing, that they put 2.5 on the town.
Right.
The school committee doesn't have to do that.
It would, you know, the thing that, I will say, I think the thing that complicates this for us is that we're part of a regional school district, right? Because if we were, if the school was just another department in our town, then they'd be coming to our department head meetings, they'd be hearing what the fire needed, they'd be hearing what police needed, they'd be more of like, we're a piece of the pie. But because of the fact that it's a regional district, it's a separate entity by design, and, and, you know, we could argue for years about, about that and whether that's good or whatever, but it, but it is what it is. But it sets it up so that, so that there isn't that connectivity between the district and us. And, and I really, it really bums me out on a deep level, because I think that, I don't wanna be throwing bombs, you know, across, I don't want other people throwing bombs at us. I don't want that. I would like to be working together to be like, okay, can we be reasonable here? We can cut here, you know, can you guys cut here? And kind of like, work together that way. But we haven't been doing that for years. And years ago, we used to have the superintendent come, when I first got elected to the board, we used, the superintendent would come to us and say, here's our budget, here's the difference between last year, and here's why we're looking for the budget. And we would say, okay, well, what about this? What about that? You know, and gee, we're up against this and we're up against that. And I don't know why it stopped. And I have spoken to every chair of the, of the school committee since it stopped and said, you know, like, I feel like they, like the superintendent should be coming and speaking to us and speaking to the FinCom and having like, a conversation. And I'm told, you can come to our meetings, meaning we could come to their meetings. And I, you know, and I've said, well, with all due respect, I did not get elected to be a school committee member. And I, and I do attend when I'm able to, but we have a bunch of subcommittees that we're on, and you know, and I'm not complaining, I signed up for this job, but it's a commitment. So I didn't sign up to be on the school committee. So a lot of times, I'll listen to the meetings in replay. We also just don't have like, the organic relationship we used to have, where the school committee members in our town would, would kind of work with the, with the board. Like, we would kind of talk and would say, hey, you know, we've got concerns or whatever. And we just don't have that. And I'm, again, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just stating that that's part of why we're in the state we're in, because there's not a dynamic dialogue going on between the school committee and the select board, and between the superintendent and the select board. It's just not happening. We have had some conversations, but it's been very like, almost scripted. We've had to say, we need to talk to you, like, can we sit down? We can only do 5%. You understand that, right? Like, that, those are the kind of conversations. And it really, ideally, I think the board would like to see that happening on an ongoing basis, right? Because these things aren't a surprise. You know, like, in, in October, you're starting, you can kind of see like, what your budget's gonna look like, things you might be adding to your programs in the schools. And there should be this sort of like, organic conversation.
There are some topical things, though, to put like, a real operational spin on this. And I think you would, you would agree, like, special education costs, which the schools are mandated to, to, to pay.
They can't.
They're skyrocketing. And a lot of schools are very wise in this, and they're finding that it's cheaper, because you hear a lot of people talking about all these, like, it's not teachers or teaching assistants, it's other like specialties, like licensed counselors and things like that. The reason why they're hiring them is because it's actually cheaper to hire them in town than it is to pay the special education cost, to send them to a 766 school, which are the schools that I oversee. So I know very intimately on this end how much it costs, and on the back end how much it costs, because the kids that leave here, go there, and it's a real thing. So by bringing these specialties into schools, and this does get lost in translation, because people just look at it and say, oh, you're not supposed to do counseling in school. Well, it's a lot cheaper than what the state mandates you to do. So that's why schools bring this stuff in. All of this stuff is talked about at school committee meetings.
Yes.
All of this, this is why I'm like, really putting emphasis on, you have to go to the school committee meetings, because you're gonna get all of this information. You're literally catching all of these conversations at the 11th hour, when we've tried to put all this stuff out there. So I really am gonna keep harping on, you have to go to these school committee meetings to get a good understanding of the budget, because it's not as simple. Because I will rally and say, that the school committee members, they do understand how much it costs to ship a kid out to a specialized school, which you are mandated by law to do. And it's going up and up and up. And the state reimbursement rates for those schools are not keeping pace with that either. And kids deserve education. They deserve to access the curriculum at any place, at any given time. So the issue that I have, respectfully, is not, and I agree with you, like, the cap could be anything. My issue is not what brought us to town meeting. We can have debates about that all day long, and they're healthy debates. You win some, you lose some. What I have a problem with is what happened on May 7, and why we got the same assessment from the four conservative representatives that brought it right back to us. It's not our choice to make. You're represented to make the hard decisions. You were elected to make hard decisions. Make the hard decisions.
That's right.
Stop kicking it back to us.
All right, and the vote, and the voters in Hanson need to realize that, when you see a sign on somebody's lawn or whatever for school committee, you really, that's, that's an important job in this.
It is an important job.
It's probably more important than the select board.
It's 50% of the budget.
It's all our money. And people say, oh, select board, I mean, school committee, no big deal. Well, it is a big deal.
It is a big deal.
And more than just the budget. I mean, there's a, there's a.
We need to have people that are gonna represent the town.
So, yeah.
Don't just give it away.
Yes, can you just?
Stacy's 70, 42 High Street. I know all costs are going up. If the state requires this with the special, and I understand all that, can't, do we have any recourse with them? Like, isn't there a chance?
Short answer is, you can do a lot of things, but it's all school committee.
Okay.
Only they can do all that stuff.
Oh, no, but I think, if, I think what I'm hearing you say is, can't, isn't there a recourse with us to press on the legislation to see if they could increase what the percent of our reimbursement is? Yeah, absolutely. And I know we, I know the school committee is constantly working with Brady and Sullivan and, you know, whomever else may be in office at the time, and saying, you've gotta do better. And we hear that they're gonna try to do better, but, you know, but then the results come, and it's a bit lackluster. You know, like, even on the per pupil, I mean, we got, whoop-de-doo, 70, what was it, $74 more student?
It's something.
I mean, it's something, but it's not, you know, but the special education is the cost that is really the problem. Okay, so, I think we've beaten that little filly to death, and it's going off to a glue factory. Anything else that anybody wanted to say about that? Okay.
I would, I just.
Oh, please, yeah, please, Mr. George.
You know, Mr. Sullivan said that if we do the override, we're looking at, everybody's looking at like, 92 bucks extra. I mean, 92 dollars probably doesn't mean too much to too many people in this room, but there is a lot of people in this town that 92 dollars is a lot of money.
I agree. I actually wanted to say, and you just kind of triggered me to remember what I was gonna say, I don't think it was the 92 dollars. I think it was the, yes, it might have been for some people, but I think it was the principal of it.
Right.
I, so, so to say, it's, you know.
That is a lot of money to some people in town. Might not be a lot of money to us sitting right here, but it's old people that are like, you got grandma that lives by herself, and she's almost 100 years old, and there's a lot of them in Hanson.
I know.
You know?
And the attitude that those people should have to sell their house and move because they can't afford taxes anymore is disgusting. People who say that in front of me will get it right back in their faces.
I've seen that.
That is disgusting.
Yeah. Okay. Obviously, very own passion, subject, Mr. Hill, did you wanna make any passion, please, then? Okay, all right. All right, so let's try to set a date, shall we? And for our next town meeting. And it will be deja vu. So, based on the timing that we're being given by Ms. Sloan, who's been extremely patient waiting for us, and I'm sorry that you've had to sit through that diatribe, is, I think, if we're, look, 29th would be the last day. I'm thinking, do we wanna do the 24th of June? What are people, what are people's thoughts? Does anybody have any exotic vacations planned?
June 24th is what.
It's a Monday. But, by the way, because this is a one-off, we could set it for Saturday if you think that that would be better. We could do it for a different day.
I'm, I'm.
Okay, all right, well, we don't wanna interfere with your B picnic.
Is there a preference for a weekday over?
What do people think?
Far enough, how it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, I mean, we.
Monday is Monday is Monday.
A Monday, I mean, I just think traditionally, we've done it on a Monday, but that hasn't always been great attendance, so I don't know.
I don't think you get any pushback, so let's set it for Monday.
All right, okay, all right. So, does the 24th, Ms. Sloan, will the 24th be in, and Ms. Green and Mr. Castro, I was struggling, I couldn't remember your last name, would the 24th be responsive to the timing, 45 days, give you enough time to post, be enough time for you to create the town meeting warrant in short? Okay. Because you guys are the ones making sausage, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, you guys are okay with the 24th?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanted clarification. It is 45 days from when we got the letter, right?
Correct. But we, I think we, I mean, we got the email like, the following day, right? From Jennifer Gross?
Who's the, who's the one?
Let's, out of an abundance of caution, if they, if they voted on the 8.
Well, they voted on 7.
No, they voted on, don't you guys mean on the 8?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, on the 8. 45 days from there is what? I think we're fine, but I just wanna double check. Is anybody, do we wanna do it the 20th?
The 22nd, 45 days from 20.
Okay, well, I'm glad we checked that out, then. All right, then.
For the 17th.
Then the 17th.
Yeah, I know, I know, but it's important.
Is that doable, Beth?
That's what you were talking about.
Okay. Our poor town clerk's got so many elections and ballots and everything this Um, our poor town clerk's got so many elections and ballots and everything this year, it's like a three-ring circus there.
So we're on the 17th now?
We have to get, uh, Sean, the moderator.
Well, hopefully Sean's available.
Yeah.
Um, but so when we take the vote tonight, we could say contingent upon his availability. Hopefully he doesn't have some exotic vacation planned for the 17th of June. Um, okay, so I will entertain a motion to set the special town meeting for June 17th, 2024. We're going to go with the 6:30 PM?
Definitely.
Okay. Um, and I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion about that? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so we're, we're on lockdown for the 17th. Thank you for your patience and your support.
Yes.
Uh, contingent upon the moderator's availability. If we have to take another vote next week, we can, but, um, let's try to mark that in the calendar. Okay. Um, all right, well, um, I think we've actually just nailed like three or four of our agenda items in that. That's a good.
Some council, we're all set with town council.
Yeah, I think we're all set. Um, Alex, thank you very much for subbing in for Kate.
All right, sure, sure thing. I'll be talking to Kate, we'll be getting that warrant together for you.
Okay, amazing. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Um, okay, so, um, we, so let's talk about the May town meeting recap. What are, are there any next steps out of that town meeting, Ms. Green?
Okay. Um, for the main, so basically the only, the only steps that we have are just to move forward with this, uh, the school committee part. Um, everything else as far as any, um, were any bylaws that we need to send, um.
What about the NIPAM? Um, do we have a role in doing anything, informing businesses about this or informing citizens or I just don't know, since it was a citizen's petition, I don't.
Correct. Um, the town, I believe Beth will send that to the Attorney General's Office, um, for their feedback on it. Um, and then we will see what they say, where it was a citizen's petition. Um, as far as any action on our end, I, that is something the, um, I believe it would need to go to the planning board or the zoning, um, or this board to determine what type of, um, fines would be, uh, connected to a store found selling them.
Who's kind of responsible for monitoring that?
Well, exactly. I mean, the, the town meeting voted to ban them, but what's in place to police this, um, this ban?
You know, we're supposed to send you undercover to all the liquor.
Well, I don't know. You know, that, that's something that we need to explore on what the, you know, what our, um, monitoring of it is going to be. I mean, basically the state sends in, yeah.
If they were selling it, I'm sure somebody would, if somebody was like totally.
People will record it, but what, what's.
All the whistle on, I'm sure.
There's no repercussions, what's the penalty?
They're not going to do it. If you tell them they can't sell NIPS, they don't come to sell NIPS.
Yeah, but I mean, what's the penalty? There's, there, there's, the town doesn't have the ability to penalize at this point.
Are we going to need a town meeting vote to come up with the?
We might need to, we might need to put into, um, a policy or a bylaw that talks about fines for selling NIPS.
All right, so you'll look into that.
So that, that's going to be the next step.
All right.
To see where.
That was the only one that in my mind I was like, yep, I think there's some follow-up that we need to do.
Just to play devil's advocate, is that something that we want to take on? I mean, because it, it, it's a citizen's petition, it's fine, but we, this, the, the voters voted on the citizen's petition. Were they asking us to take on like all these other extra stuff?
I think it was to compel the selectmen to implement, uh, let's take a look at that wording. I, I think in the spirit of it, um, Mr. Weeks, I see what you're saying, but I think in the spirit of it, I think it was asking that we take whatever the next steps are, like that the, that, you know, the citizen.
Can we talk to the petitioners to figure out what they actually did want us to do?
Yeah, it's Mr. Smith, Stephen Smith, so I think, um, I think we could.
Because that, that'll give us an idea of what.
If they're, if they're not allowed to sell them in the town, the distributors are not going to sell them to the liquor store because they will be liable just as much as them selling it as them.
That makes sense, yeah, that makes sense.
Does it feel like a license thing, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
You know, Martin Eddie, that's a big liquor company. They're not, if.
I'm sure they keep track of where, yeah, yeah.
If we're not, if we're not allowed to sell NIPS, they're not going to say, hey, you want some NIPS? It's going to be like off the, it's not even going to be an auction for them to buy it.
But we should probably just look into what have other towns done? Do they have a penalty? I don't know. I mean, you know, since this wasn't our article, we don't, you know.
That's kind of why I want to talk to the petitioners, see what their, what their.
Yeah, so maybe you can sit down with Mr. Smith and pick his brain a bit.
Okay.
I think we should worry about other things.
Okay. Um, October, uh, do any other things from the?
What about the, um, MBTA zoning thing?
There's nothing for us to do.
Um, I, I don't know if there's, I guess I could talk to the, um, do people know when the inability to receive grants begins?
We are in compliance until the end of the year.
Okay, that was, that was a question that is, that is out there.
Um, we are in compliance until the end of the year and then at that point, I guess we will see what the Attorney General is going to do. Um, whether they will claw back the grants and, which would be awful.
Of everything else we've been doing.
Yeah, um, but, um, and then whether we get sued. And, uh, one of the things we probably do need to talk about, um, in anticipation of the lawsuit is perhaps, um, if we can get some kind of an estimate, Ms. Green, on what we think we will need for funds to defend ourselves. Um, and we're going to have to put a line item in our October town meeting for that. Um, because it's not, it's not going to be our normal legal fees and it probably isn't even going to be our normal town council. So, um, I don't know what that dollar amount is, but if you can, um, do that, that would be great. And then, um, one of the other things, um, we wanted to look at was I know Ms. Sloan had said that she was, um, going to probably resign next year, um, in June of 2025, I think.
She has expressed, um, she has expressed that at this point that she does not have an intention on running again. Um, whether or not she continues down, down that path, I don't know, but.
So I think one of the things we need to think about is do we want to take the opportunity since Ms. Sloan is leaving to have that be an appointed position and maybe appointed by the moderator? I don't know. I don't know what other towns are doing. I think it's 50/50. I just talked to somebody from the Whitman Town Clerk the other night about it. Um, and they said it was sort of like 50/50, some elected, some appointed. And talked to Ms. Sloan about it and just think about whether we, that might be something that we might want to do. Um, okay, uh, and, and then you guys, anything that you guys think of that you might want to have on the October town meeting? I know it sounds absurd to be talking about that now, but before you know it, someone will be here, we'll be, you know, backing into it.
First draft that I have with some of the articles being tabled in May.
So what is our timeline for October? When our articles do, um.
I put that in there too.
You did, okay. There was a lot of material in here, Ms. McDowell, for this evening.
I was trying to make that brief because I couldn't.
It's so helpful tonight.
It's a little long.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. Okay, so you're saying, um, you're going to send the memo to all of the departments and towns, town, um, employees July 1st, um, August, for August? Try to get, so July, uh, sort of mid-July-ish or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, see, we thought it was absurdly early, but here we are. It's a mere couple of months away. Um, okay, and then, um. Okay, I don't like finding all my mistakes, you make me feel bad, don't you? What, what was it, Mr. Hill?
I didn't have it made to October.
Oh, okay. All right, anything else on that? All right. Um, we don't need to take a vote, I just wanted to. And, and again, the date of town meeting is?
June 21st.
October?
June 17th.
Yeah.
17th.
October.
October 9th?
October 7th.
7th?
7th, yes.
Okay. Um, oh, okay, I see what you, yeah, okay. Um, all right, that's great. Vote to approve site readiness grant, Ms. Green.
Okay. So, um, the town did receive through the One Stop for Growth Grant Program, um, a grant for, they call it site readiness. Um, this is a property, I believe it's Zero West Washington Street.
Zero.
Um, that there's, we have a grant to bring in a consultant who will help us with all of the permit information, um, in basically prepare the site for anybody that's interested in developing it. So they will know exactly, you know, the permitting that is available. Um, they will, again, they'll look at, um, lining out like survey of the property lines. So site readiness means it's going to be ready to go. Um, if somebody wants to come in and.
Is this within the, um, bounds of the, um, industrial area?
Yes, yes.
So the, this was, I don't know if you guys remember better, like a year or so ago, um, one of the, um, contractors in town said, you guys really need to try to get the permits in place before you sell a piece of property because people are buying the property and then just go into a couple of conservation meetings or a ZBA meeting, like no heavy lifting, and then flipping it, turning around and selling the property for more because now you know what can be done with it. So with that in mind, um, uh, Mr. DeFrayis and, uh, Ms. Green said, let's try to pre-permit. So now we've got a package and you don't have to guess, gee, can I, will I be able to, are they going to allow me to? It's going to all be like one-stop shop.
So it's not a.
Yeah, so we're not paying for it. I mean, you know, as Mr. Weeks has said before, it is our tax money, but, um, uh, but, um, it's a grant, um, so it's not additional taxation to the citizens of Hanson.
So in your, in your packet, um, I believe, do you have a copy of that? You will find there is, um, a reading.
Right here. This second page.
The second page.
The resolution.
The resolution, so, um, I don't know if somebody would want to read this and take a motion.
I think that would fall to our clerk.
And, and basically what this does is, is this just says, and this is typical of any type of grant that the state, um, awards where a piece of property could potentially be sold. It's just a way of the state recouping if, if the town were to sell this for $3 million, the state simply with this resolution says that the town will pay the state back the $98,000 that they awarded to us in the grant, so.
Will we be done with this by the end of the year?
We are working very quickly to get this done. Fantastic. So, um, if somebody could read the resolution and then the, the, um, board vote and then we can sign it and then we can send it in.
Okay, so read it first, all right. Resolution in support of the site readiness grant for, whereas the land located at Zero West Washington Street, the site, has been deemed a site suitable for the site assessment program administered by the Massachusetts Development Finance Agency, Mass. Development. Whereas the town of Hanson, a Massachusetts municipal corporation, having a mailing address at 542 Liberty Street, municipality, has been awarded a site readiness recoverable grant in the amount of $98,826 from the Mass. Development, the recoverable grant for readiness assistance related to the site, the project. Whereas the recoverable grant was formalized for a grant agreement dated, date entered into by, between the municipality and the Mass. Development, the grant agreement, and whereas the municipality has agreed to repay the recoverable grant, now therefore the town of Hanson Select Board votes as follows. If the site or any portion thereof is sold, conveyed, gifted, demised, ground leased or otherwise transferred or refinanced, and as a result of said transaction, the recipient receives funds that exceed the aggregate amount necessary for repayments of existing monetary liens, mortgage, loans and other debt on the project and all the costs incurred by them in the acquisition, development, ownership and sale of the site or the portion of the site transferred, the net proceeds. The recipient shall reimburse Mass. Development the full amount of the net proceeds up to the amount of the recoverable grant that has been dispersed and is now, and has not already been repaid to Mass. Development, the dispersed funds. And then it'd be signed. Let's read chair, vice chair, member, member, member.
No, but just to be clear, so if we turn around and sell this, then we have to reimburse them the 98,000?
Yes. If we sell it for more than what the grant, so if we sold it for $2 million, we would have to reimburse the grant 98,000.
For more than $98,826.
If we don't sell it for more than that, then we, there, we don't owe the state any.
If we sell it for 50,000, we don't owe them the 50.
Great, exactly, yes.
But it's only if it, if it. But we have to do some deep soul searching. Because a piece of property is worth more than 50,000. Okay, so, um, I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And, um, Ms. Green, I think, are we also going to take a vote to allow you to sign on our behalf because I see a letter that appears to need your signature?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to direct Ms. Green to sign the letter, uh, for the site readiness.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Fantastic, we are moving along here, let's see. Brings us to vote to appoint Mary Collins to service a member of the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors for fiscal year 2024. Ms. Green.
Yes, so, um, our, um, senior center director, Mary Collins, has been appointed to this, um, this agency prior, so she is basically the perfect person to continue to serve the town in this capacity.
So moved.
Second.
Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, and of course, love our Mary Collins and congratulations. Um, okay, um, accept the following donations received in March of 2024. $2,070 to the library, $215 to the day gift account, $50 to the veterans' gift fund, um, and then accept a donation to the Council on Aging in honor of Ken DeLu, $25 from Roberta O'Reilly, $25 from Arlene Quimby Verity, $225 for Michael and Vicky Lynn Tantil. I will, um, entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Approve request for Hanson Historical Society to use the Hanson Indian Head Elementary School grounds on September 21st, 2024, um, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM for a craft show.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good thing we changed the Hanson date to the 28th.
Yep.
So we can move past that. And then that, uh, brings us to approve request for Hanson Holiday Committee to use.
Economic Development Committee, number nine.
No, we, no, we already.
We already did that?
We did that earlier on. That was, that was the one that threw Ed for monkey wrench earlier on.
Got it.
Okay, approve request for Hanson Holiday Committee to use the former McQuon School Site and the Indian Head School Parking Lot on Saturday, October 19th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM for the annual trunk or treat.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, and I hope that's as well attended as the Touch a Truck was this past week and that was fantastic.
Just so you know, this is one of the fundraisers for them to get money for the fireworks.
Right.
And for the holiday party. So I hope people know that. Because that's, you know. Which brings us to the approve the request of the Hanson Holiday Committee to use the town green on Saturday, December 7th, 2024, 5:00 to 7:00 PM for the annual holiday festival. Mark your calendars with fireworks scheduled for 7:00 PM.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Approve request for Cub Scouts PAC 34 to use the McQuon Elementary School Parking Lot and Field on Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, 5:30 to 7:30 PM for a rocket launch.
Salute.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm kind of excited about that.
That sounds like fun.
Myself, it looks fun, doesn't it? So it's a Tuesday, maybe we won't have a meeting that night, we'll see.
Maybe we should cancel that.
Maybe we'll work that into the agenda. One-day liquor license for 52524, Kristen Techno, 6224, Nadia Calavale, 10424, Susan Hickey. I will entertain that motion.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to committee updates. Oh, oh, thank you, Mr. Weeks. And then we have approve open session meeting minutes from April 23rd, 2024, May 6th, 2024, and May 7th, 2024. I will entertain that motion.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Economic Development Committee, not much to report, we're meeting in June. And at which point, and this is a little exciting, at least to me, we'll have the South Shore Chamber of Commerce coming to our meeting to talk about how we might partner with them and become a member, little old Hanson. So yeah, that's exciting. High Street Park Committee.
We have our next meeting on Monday.
Okay, fantastic. Highway Committee.
We deferred that meeting, please, did we set a new date? No, no, because we didn't know it was gonna happen at a town meeting.
Okay, and McQuon Property, oh, go ahead.
And no, no, well, we have the new director.
Yes.
The interim director.
We're kind of in a weird little area there because we're down a couple guys, we've got the interim guy.
Right.
So McQuon Property Reuse Committee, we're gonna put a pin on that and then after we get into our next year, which will be, you know, coming around shortly, yep, next week, then we will work with the Select Board to set a date for a public forum. And one of the things I am hoping that you could think about, Ms. Green, is could we get a third party to kind of orchestrate that for, public forum? Maybe OCPC or somebody else who might be able to kind of solicit feedback and, you know, document it and all of that. You don't need to answer that now. And Recreation Committee, I don't know why we keep having that on here.
Shouldn't it be commissioned?
It's now commissioned, that's a good point. It is now commissioned. And now we actually have to look for members for the Recreation Commission. Whitman Hanson Regional School Agreement, just gonna skip right past that?
Yes, let's.
Nothing to say. Other committee updates? Okay, fantastic. And then that brings us to you, Ms. Green, Town Administrator Report.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. So first and foremost, I really would just like to thank all town employees who were involved with preparing and working through town meeting. Our town clerk, assistant town clerk, executive assistant, administrative assistant, town accountant, our maintenance technician, Charlie Baker, Hanson Highway staff, fire police, for all their help with town meeting. There's a lot of labor that goes into town meeting, a lot of collaboration, so great work with all, very well attended, and they all deserve a lot of recognition and thanks for the hard work on that. We are beginning, again, the process for preparing for special town meeting number two, which the board just set the date for, June 17th. So we will work on starting the advertising for that and articles and all of the preparations with that. As the board remembers, the, the town was awarded multiple earmarks, probably a little over a year ago maybe, for projects such as Plymouth County Hospital Site Renovations, Bonny House renovations, construction, design of a boardwalk that would stretch from Main Street to the Burridge. So budget, scopes of work and budgets were due to the state by basically tomorrow, May 15th. So Tony DeFrayis and myself worked with Charlie Baker, Carrie Glass, our building inspector on looking at the Bonny House and the County Hospital. And we actually put together some scopes of work and budget that we did, I did submit to the state today. So what we did was we broke up $170,000 into some different projects. So at least we were, we were potentially, could have lost that money. So we put all that together and we submitted it. We can always make some changes down the line, but at least we've submitted what they were looking for. I do want to mention our highway director vacancy is posted. It is on our website, it is posted here in Town Hall, it is on Indeed, it will be in the Whitman Hanson Express on this Thursday, May 16th, next one is Thursday, May 23rd. Resumes, cover letters are due to the Town Administrator's Office by June 3rd.
And are we doing MMA?
We are not doing MMA. We figured with the cost of the MMA, we're, 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 basically we're using a lot of resources that will reach a lot more people.
Okay.
Our past hires have been actually through Indeed.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not, it doesn't cost anything. Plus with our budget the way it is, you know, you have to kind of pick and choose.
Yep.
So again, I want to mention our senior center was awarded a $300,000 grant for, to add a room that would support, that would provide the supportive day program services. They held that, they had those services prior to COVID, then with COVID, unfortunately, they had to discontinue. But this grant will allow them to add on an extra room to provide that service that they're gonna be bringing back, so.
Is that something we're going to be able to effectuate by the end of the year?
We've already signed the contract, sent it in, and they're already looking at the space out there, so we, we're, we're moving very quickly on these grants.
Good.
And today we started the Department Head Leadership Series that I have worked with our Maya in Employee Assistance Program to put together. Today was the first of the series, our department heads attended that and it focused on leadership, collabora, collaboration, communicative goals. Well-received, it was just about an hour, so it didn't take very long. The next two series will be navigating, navigating challenging situations and then also looking at performance management, things like that. So those will be, that will be June 14th and then July 14th, I believe.
How will they receive, while we're saved or?
While we're saved, yes. While we're saved, yes. You know, in, in Maya's office, this is at no charge to the town, so why not take advantage of it?
It's great.
Also too, I just want to mention too, the Saturday, May 18th is town elections, so, you know, with all of the conversations tonight regarding voting, please come on out and vote, support the candidates.
And along those lines, Ms. Green, I did mention to Ms. Sprague and Ms. McDowell, I want to make sure all Town Hall signs everywhere, electronic, hard copy, sandwich boards, plane, train, automobile, that were clear that we're saying that on those signs.
Yes.
Because I did see one that was still saying Touch a Truck and.
Oh, okay. I believe these two, these two out here are changed. We'll make sure the sandwich boards that were at the library and the fire station are changed.
And could we do a couple of social media posts?
Oh, absolutely.
Just to kind of remind people?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Sprague is on it.
And did we do anything in the express?
We didn't put anything express, I don't know if our town clerk might have.
Okay.
Because I know that they do talk about the categories and things like that in the express, so.
Okay.
But we did not put anything in. And that actually concludes my Town Administrator Report for this morning.
Yes, Mr.?
I have a question.
Uh-oh.
What?
We're in trouble.
No. Why can't we have some signs made up that we can plant in some of the islands when we have a town meet and town election?
We do, they just did it. This is the first time this year, we just got them.
Where are they?
Yeah. They just pulled them.
Oh, we need like 25 of them.
Those are big, we did yard sale signs, not the small ones that you need to print out.
No, not small signs, I'm talking about the, the ones that you see laying. Like an election sign, like.
Like an election sign.
An election sign. And all you got was two of them?
Well, we wanted to see how they work.
It was a tester this year.
They were testers.
We did two, one was at the fire station, one was at the library.
Oh, I saw that.
We're definitely gonna do a third one.
You're gonna do 20 more.
We need like 25 of them that you can put all over the town.
Even if we do do those little ones with the wire, I think it's well worth it because, you know, a lot of people don't look on, God love them, Facebook, they don't, you know, maybe not, they're focusing on driving and not looking at the signs.
Contracted signs are cheap.
No, no, I said that, I said we, you can make them on, on, VistaPrint.
Yeah, they're ripoff. They're expensive, those are the places.
Well, we, we, we are conscious of our budget as well. We thought these, the heavier signs, they, they hold out well in the weather and things like that.
Are they changeable?
Yeah, they're reusable, changeable. All those numbers, it's all changeable. So again, Ms. Sprague and Ms. McDowell did a great job putting those together.
About, how much are we?
I think they were lower, $100?
It was about $150 a piece. But if you got them already made and assembled with the, the letterhead, it's already, it would have been like over $300 a side.
Anything you ever need assembled, don't get assembled, we'll do it.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe we could get a couple more, I know things are tight, but, you know, but maybe we could get a couple more because I do think like the, where the American Legion puts there, that would be a good visibility point and maybe like down, like off a county road, you know, like some of those intersections that are busy, you know.
We'll look into doing the small ones. Yeah, I'm gonna look into doing the small ones that I can just have created and printed on.
Because those like the cardboard, be much easier.
They're cool.
Because I guarantee you, no matter what we do.
You can get them for.
We're gonna hear, I didn't know that there was a town meeting or a town election or whatever, fill in the blank, we always hear that and, and, you know, you might hear a primal scream from my end of the town. Because, you know, like I'm putting stuff on Facebook and you guys are talking about it, but, but you gotta try to reach people where they are at. And I know when you were on that communication strategic planning thing, that was one of the things we really talked about was how do we get that word out there?
It's the most annoying thing, but, but sometimes putting it on somebody's windshield at the train station and everybody coming home from work.
So if you like buy like four of those signs, the ones that we can just have printed, they're like eight bucks a piece.
Oh, yeah.
On VistaPrint, plus shipping.
You don't need us to vote to approve that.